And we're ready.
Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, November 15th, 2023. Bill after six o'clock. We're here in City Council chambers at 345 High Street, of course, in Hamilton. And I apologize for being late. We do have one public hearing this evening that involves an amendment to the Hamilton Indian Springs jet. Roll call, please.
Pullman?
Present.
Fear?
Present.
Vaughn?
Present.
Ryan?
Present.
Nab?
Present.
Lauer?
Present.
Moller?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great. We're going to start off in our thing of prayer. The council member Joel Lauer, filed by a pledge of allegiance, and please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, we continue to seek your guidance in the business that is before us. Sharpen our skills, strengthen our endurance, give us the wisdom to make good decisions, and bless our persistent effort towards communication and understanding as we work towards the common good of our city. Thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed on us. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
My apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
It's not going to fall, though.
No. It's going to turn eagle. You're in good shape. If I legible, that'd be okay.
Thanks.
All right. We have special presentations this evening. And first one has to do with Hamilton High School. It's like a fine arts group. And I believe Joel Lauer, you want to lead us in this too a little bit?
I'm very excited about this. We have Mr. Teegarden back here. He is, he is, he's at Garfield with myself. He has, he is in charge of a couple great, great groups. One, I wanted him to come up today and talk about the play that is on December 1st and 2nd. I'm very excited about that, especially after what I witnessed last year in the spring. Mr. Teegarden is a very talented teacher, and I'm glad to teach with him. And I've watched the presentation on a practice, but I'm very, I'm very excited about tonight and what you guys are going to perform here in a little bit. Mr. Teegarden, if you'd like to go ahead, come on up.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. Hello, my name is Austin Teegarden. I'm the choir teacher at Garfield Middle School. And let's get started. I'm really excited to talk to you all. And the special presentation, let me tell you, it's going to be special. Okay. The choral department at Hamilton City Schools is made up by three of us. Ms. Christina Fox of the high school in freshman building, myself, Austin Teegarden at Garfield, and Samuel Downs at Wilson Middle. I'm going to take us on a brief overview of the choral department and get right through it. Great. First things first, we have the middle school choirs. At the moment, in the middle school choirs, there are 175 unique students involved. The photo you see up there is our end of the concert photo from our combined concert on October 10th of this year. That's roughly 160 to 170 students on the stage at the same time, which was an absolutely wonderful wall of sound as all those kids sang and brought their voices up together. We really focus on building confidence and finding your own voice in middle school choir so that we can prepare our students for the other choral activities we have. Quote from an eighth grade student, "Your voice is the future." Your voice is the future. I asked them for quotes this week before this presentation to see what they would say. Hamilton, cutting edge. This is something that I personally direct with my friend and colleague, Mr. Samuel Downs. This is our middle school show choir, roughly 35 to 45 members. We rehearse twice a week after school. These are some of the hardest working students in all of the middle school. This is made up of seventh, eighth, and ninth graders at Hamilton City Schools. They rehearse twice a week from the moment we start school through March, and that doesn't even include the week of camp they have leading up, which is five days, eight-hour days, to get ready for the school year. We will be participating in five different competitions this year, including hosting our own Double H with the high school. Perform a variety of musical styles and genres. Really wonderful. I encourage you to come find yourself at a high school show choir competition, middle school show choir competition, especially when we host this year at Double H. Next, we have Hamilton Prestige, and some of these kids back here just cringed a little bit because they realized they're on the pictures. Hamilton High School Show Choir, 30 to 40 members, same sort of deal, rehearse twice a week after school, including rehearsing every single day at school. So this group puts in a ton of time, a ton of effort. This past year, we had three show choirs. With the addition of our new group, we went, moved back down to one larger show choir at the high school. They will be hosting Double H come this March. Finally, the group that is here this evening, this is Hamilton and Harmonics. This is a contemporary a cappella group. So a cappella means they perform entirely without instruments. It is all their voices. All the sounds you'll hear this evening are produced by the human voice, from the ahs to the ooze to the singing to even the vocal percussion from our vocal percussionist. This past weekend, we made over our first major hurdle, which was performing live at the Kettering National A Cappella Festival. Over 75 groups attended this event, and we were one of a few chosen to perform main stage for this, not competition, but this festival this past Saturday. And I just found out today in my email that we've actually been accepted to compete come March. This is a very rigorous competition process where you have to submit videos of your group to determine whether or not you are ready to compete. So that was really exciting news for them to receive today. And lastly, before we get to the singing, oh, and this is, this is your official, official thing, guys. This is you as an ICHSA competitor, International Competition of High School A Cappella. Great. And coming up, December 1st and 2nd, Clue, the high school version at the high school. If you are in Clue, would you mind raising your hand back there? These kids do everything. I don't even know how they do it, honestly. But we have so many lovely, lovely things that we're going to be doing with this play. It's going to be so amazing. It's hilarious. It's a, it's a comedy for sure. And these kids really play up the comedy. If there's one thing they know how to do, it's laugh. Up there, you see our logo. That's our QR code for tickets. Please buy your tickets soon. We are so excited. We have performances December 1st and December 2nd. Now, without much further ado, we have a, we have a singing performance for you tonight. We're going to sing Singing Alive by Sia. This will feature a trio of soloists, Claudia Jones, Marie Cunningham, and Lily Oden. Fair warning to everyone, it might get a little loud in here. Sound good? Are you all ready?
Yes.
Awesome. Where would you like them to stand?
You can bring them.
All right. Let's go, guys. Man, this is why I don't write the jokes. That's good stuff. So go up there in your two lines like we, like we practiced. I'm going to give you your pitches.
Would you like Councilman Lauer to join you as you sing?
That would be my favorite thing. We will pitch us back.
I was born in a thunderstorm. I grew up overnight. I played alone. I played on my own. I survived. I had a poor way taken to a place where all the demons go.
Oh, where the wind won't change and nothing in the ground could ever grow.
No hope, just lies. You're taught to cry in your own. But I survived. I'm alive. I've got something to say. I swear. I survived. And it was mine. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing.
Took it all, but I'm still breathing.
I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing.
I have been everywhere for the day. I should remember my dream.
I'm still breathing. 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 I'm alive. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm alive.
That was so good.
Thank you so much for having us. We have a few that have to actually go back to work. So if don't mind them just stepping out real quick, thank you so much for having us. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
That was absolutely fantastic. Joel, what else you want to say?
I, you know, I get to listen to Lizzie every night sing, sing around the house. But she, these kids put so much into, so much effort into this. They are so proud. They do so many things. The new, the newbies last year, Newsbees, can't remember the name of it, was an awesome play. And I am really, and I am not a performing arts person, but I am really looking forward to Clue. And I have been, I've been intrigued with, with this program since I went, started going to play some things. So I appreciate Mr. Teegarden and all the kids that do stuff.
Was he trying to say, was he trying to say Newsies? I saw that on Broadway. That's an awesome music.
Yeah. Well, I'm not a Broadway guy. Like Joshua.
When you get to Broadway, take Joel with you. I did, I think we're pretty speechless up here. I mean, that's how great it was. I recognize one of Cunningham's sisters out there, too. And what an incredible representative group from Hamilton.
Yes.
Hamilton Fine Arts and Music. My gosh. Okay. Good job, Councilmember Lauer. Anybody else want to say anything at all? All right. Thank you so much. What a way to start a meeting. Okay. Next is Hamilton Chamber of Commerce, Lonely Entrepreneur Program with Dan Bates. I think John Gadduli or Dan Bates speaking.
No, I'm not singing.
Come on, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. I have a very short presentation, but we're very excited. This is an article that appeared in the Journal News a few weeks ago. We have a new online program called the Lonely Entrepreneur. This is a partnership with the Hamilton Community Foundation, and we are able to offer 50 free licenses to entrepreneurs or business owners. And basically, the platform has 1,000 different learning modules. And it's everything that you could possibly want to know about taking an idea from an idea to what do you do next. So it's very basic, how to start a business, how to write a business plan, how to run a marketing plan, what's an LLC, what legal guidance you need. Like I said, it's over 1,000 learning modules that people can take on their own time. They can also tie into chats across the United States with experts on any topic that they are interested in. So if they are trying to start a restaurant or something, they can actually talk to a successful restaurateur who has been, you know, successful in that industry. The other exciting thing about it that really makes us excited about this is it's free, and it can translate into 104 different languages. Okay? So with a click. So the entire platform translates. This is just a screenshot of what one of the modules looks like. There's like, here's one, what, what is selling? What's it all about? What does it take? You know, there's different ones. There's about marketing. I'm just putting my contact information up there. I'm the key contact for this so that if anybody is interested in getting on the platform, there's the link, but they can reach out to me and we can get them on board. It's not just, you know, all online because there's also people that, once they register and sign up, they're in the platform. And then people track their progress and also let the chamber know how those individuals are doing. We have 10 entrepreneurs and businesses who have already registered, so we have 40 still available. I think they're going to go fast. So free platform, very excited about this. This does not take the place of, you know, the SBDC, Small Business Development Centers and things like that. What it really does is get people even more prepared so when they have those face-to-face conversations, they're more ready. A lot of the business coaches talk about somebody has never had a business before. They come in and they don't even know what the language is. So, you know, this will actually reduce that time, turn that time face-to-face into really valuable time. So we're very excited. Like I said, 50 free licenses for the first year, and they'll be working with coaches and with the Chamber of Commerce. So any questions?
Sounds great.
Sorry, no singing, but we're, we're very excited about the platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right. Next, we have a presentation, Ohio Issue Number Two. Our law director, Letitia Block.
Good evening, Mayor Moller, members of City Council, citizens of the city of Hamilton. I'm here today to talk about Ohio Issue Two, which was just on our ballot last week for all Ohio voters. Ohio Issue Two was proposed to commercialize, regulate, legalize, and tax adult use of cannabis. It proposes to create a new chapter in the Ohio Revised Code, and that is Chapter 3780 of the Ohio Revised Code. I want to walk you through what that law proposes in Chapter 1780, which will become effective on December 7th of 2023, so not very long from now. I also want to inform City Council of the legislative authority that is carved out in that chapter. Then I want to talk about what limitations we have as a city that are set forth in that chapter. Then I want to talk about where the city of Hamilton has been with respect to medical marijuana, because we have dealt with that before due to the passage of laws related to medical marijuana. And then I want to request direction from City Council as to its pleasure related to the legislative authority carved out in Chapter 3780. Okay, so high level, Ohio Issue Two in this Chapter 3780, it establishes licenses for recreational cannabis for cultivators, processors, and dispensaries. It also allows for the personal cultivation of six plants per adult, a maximum of 12 per household. It creates a new division under the Department of Commerce of Cannabis Control. It also provides for the legal use, possession, transport of cannabis for individuals 21 years of age and older. So this is just a high level. Of course, the law provides for a whole host of things, but this is just a high-level overview of that. So I want to just highlight a few provisions that may be of significance to City Council. It provides for a 500-foot buffer for these facilities, and it is a 500-foot buffer around what they are calling prohibitive facilities. And so those include a church, a public library, a public playground, a public park, or a school. So there is a section that sets forth where these entities cannot be. Of significant importance for my presentation tonight, it creates a section that says what a municipality can do with respect to medical, non-medical marijuana operators. So it says a legislative authority may adopt an ordinance or a resolution by majority vote to prohibit or limit the number of adult-use cannabis operators permitted under this chapter within the municipal corporation. So this is significant. It also sets forth, and this is, I apologize, this is kind of hard to see, but it also sets forth the rights of employers. So even though it's hard to see on this screen, it clarifies that this law is not intended to restrict employer rights. So for example, an employer still would have the right to, for example, refuse to hire individuals who possess, who distribute, or who use marijuana. So that is set forth in the statute. There are a number of things that a municipality cannot do with respect to non-medical marijuana usage. It can not levy a tax related to it. It cannot charge for operators. It cannot prohibit or limit the homegrown authority or any other activity that is specifically allowed within the chapter. Okay, so now I want to talk briefly about what the city of Hamilton did with respect to medical marijuana. So this is the provision of the Ohio Revised Code, which is very similar to what we just covered about what the authority that can do. So this is already existing law, 379629. It's not new. It's already on the books in Ohio. And it provides that a legislative authority can pass an ordinance that will prohibit or limit the number of cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries licensed under this chapter. So this is for medical marijuana usage. In response to what was set forth under Ohio law, the city of Hamilton passed a zoning ordinance to zone medical marijuana facilities outside the city of Hamilton. So in our zoning code, you will see that it is not a permitted use in our zoning code. We also passed an ordinance in our business regulations code to prohibit medical marijuana operators within the city of Hamilton. And so now I want to talk about the timing and what your options are associated with non-medical marijuana operators. So the timing of this is December 7th, 2023. And I have three options for consideration. First is to consider whether or not you want to prohibit adult-use cannabis operators within the city of Hamilton. The second is whether or not you want to limit the number of adult-use cannabis operators per the statute. Third, whether or not the pleasure of council is to take no action related to this. So we've been checking in with colleagues across the state about what people's pleasure is to do on this. Since it just passed last week, a number of cities are still deciding what they are going to do. Some are, you know, taking the position that they want to have a moratorium to say that we will for sure prohibit it for a year. Some are looking at zoning it out, and some people are looking at a belt-and-suspenders approach, similar to what we did with medical marijuana, where they're thinking about zoning it out and also creating a business regulation to prohibit it in the city of Hamilton. And so there is a provision in the law that provides that if the state does not act within a certain time period to issue licenses within the state within a period of months, that legal action can be taken against the state for not implementing. And so, of course, we know we don't have a Division of Cannabis Control for non-medical marijuana users now, but once a license is issued, there is not an ability to have a municipal prohibition and later revoke that. And so that is, you know, a risk that council could take in terms of waiting for sure after December 7th, but not knowing how fast the state is going to get up and running for licenses. And so they for sure have to do it within a period of months, or there could be consequences for that, from that perspective. So the safest bet, if there is a desire to prohibit or to limit, is to do that before the December 7th deadline. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Number Fear.
Letitia, does that include doing a moratorium?
Correct. So the safest route would be to do whatever the pleasure is, if it's to prohibit or to limit or do that prior to December 7th, 2023. You could do it, you know, in January of 2024 with the hope that nothing is happening, you know, with, with the state after that, before that.
Question, if it's prohibited, that could be changed to a later date. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, I saw, I think in your presentation, there can't be any kind of special tax levied or, or charge levied on?
Correct. That is set forth specifically in the, in the statute that a municipality cannot levy any taxes or fees associated with the operators.
Mr. Mayor.
Number Vaughn.
If the city prohibits, what is the consequence for someone who may possess within the city? How would that be cited? And for also those who are cultivating or?
So the authority of the city of Hamilton is not related to usage or possession. There is a specific section in the law that identifies what are the limitations on individuals. And so it specifically says that an individual can use or possess or transfer or distribute. And it also specifically says that any adult consumer may not be arrested, may not be criminally prosecuted, may not be penalized civilly for engaging in those legalized activities. So the city of Hamilton doesn't have authority to address usage issues. It has the authority to be able to determine whether or not it wants to prohibit or limit the operators, not the users. Okay. Operators mean those, those businesses that are going to be selling, distributing, et cetera.
Is it a separate decision to limit cultivation versus sales? Can you prohibit one and not the other? Or do you have to do both?
So you're saying you would, do you want to think about whether you want to limit only certain types of operators as opposed to not all of them as defined in this?
Well, because it allows cultivation, it also allows the sale of. And I'm assuming not all businesses would cultivate and sell. Is that true? So if you did not want cultivation or you didn't want sales within the city, is there a distinction or is it just all or nothing?
Okay, so the, the... Okay, so the law specifically calls out that we couldn't restrict people like a research lab or things of that nature. And so there's no way for us to restrict that. That's item number one that's on there. And so is that what you're aimed at with the cultivation?
And that's based on amount. But if you want to cultivate a larger amount for sale, is that all one? You cultivate yourself? Or am I really confused on this?
I want to make sure I'm understanding your question. But basically, you're saying, could you just limit people who are, you know, you only want to prohibit people who are selling versus people who are cultivating? I'm not sure that that's... I have to go back and see how the operators are defined.
And I don't know that it matters, but I read several things, and it talks about both. And it's different if you're cultivating for sale or if you're just a retailer. And so I didn't know. I didn't see the answer when I read through it. But thank you.
There's different types of, hopefully this will answer your question. I make sure I'm following you. So an adult cannabis operator means the levels. You have a Level One adult cultivator, a Level Two adult cultivator, you have a processor, and then you have a dispensary. So if I'm understanding your question, are you saying, could we perhaps do some type of prohibition on one of those or several of those? Is that kind of the heart of your question?
Yeah. And I'm not singling out any one. I don't know, but because there seems to be different levels of what has been voted on. And so, and we can talk more about it if we get down in the...
Yeah, I mean, what the plain language of the statute basically says is that we can prohibit, you know, operators or restrict or limit them. And so the language of the statute reads that we could have that discretion to be able to say we want, that's an appropriate limitation within the statute. And I wouldn't think that would be problematic. We just have to be clear on defining what we're prohibiting or limiting.
Sure. Thank you.
So there's four different types of licenses: cultivator, processor, dispensary, and a testing laboratory. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So by ordinance, we could prohibit cultivators licenses?
Yes, that's correct.
And we could prohibit processor licenses? We could prohibit dispensary licenses? But the adult-use testing laboratories are protected? Did I read that right or did I misunderstand? I thought somewhere there was a limit on laboratories, that that may not be able to be prohibited.
Right. That's on bullet point number one.
It's got to be an authorized research institution, it looks like. I'm reading this correctly.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
House Number Four.
So just to clarify, you're allowed six to 12 plants per household, you know, one, six per adult, and a total of 12. They are not, it's for personal use only. So it is not, they cannot sell what they're growing, right?
That's correct.
Okay, then I just want to make sure. And the only one, you have to be licensed to have a storefront or something in the city. You're saying if we don't do, if we wait till January 1st to do something about having storefronts, that somebody could get a license and get approval for a store between then?
We just, we don't know. You know, like, we don't have any control about when the state is going to, you know, to act and get a simple... Do I think that's likely? No, I don't think it's likely that the state is going to be able to set up a new division, you know, hire employees, issue regulations, you know, all of that before January.
So if it's, I understand that, so we got a little bit of time probably to think about it, but we, you know, once they get their license, we cannot revoke a license, but we could put an ordinance in saying that we don't have, we don't allow a storefront here, basically, right?
If they, after they get their license, we will be substantially limited in terms of what action we could take to get the license taken away or to restrict their business.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
House Number Four.
Letitia, for the personal cultivation, how do they regulate? Do they go to your homes to see how many?
We don't know. We don't know. I mean, I think that those are all going to be to be determined.
I figured that one year or so.
We just have to be real, that's not going to happen, so.
You know, maybe prohibiting and then seeing how it goes in the rest of the state might be the way to go, because who knows what this is going to look like anywhere across this city, across the state, I mean.
I think that's, that's where people who are unsure about what the state is going to do, what the regulations are going to look like, I think that that's where a number of people are thinking about with their communities, is it's safer to go ahead and, you know, prohibit, and then we'll see what happens, and then you can always, you know, roll it back, you know?
Mayor. House Number Nine.
Letitia, for all my reading since last week and speculation, as you said, you've contacted other jurisdictions, would you please send us this presentation tonight as well?
Absolutely.
Thanks. I've got chapters of things that I've read this past week, but again, it's not conclusive. And again, we've got this obligation over the next week to come up with something that works. So thanks for sending that along.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor. House Number Lauer.
Ms. Buck, did you, you said something about take no action, and then there was something, if we took no action, what would happen with that?
So if you take no action, then you can let this play, you know, play out, and people can apply for licenses to be a dispensary in the City of Hamilton. And once they have their license, they can find a place to operate, and then that would be allowed.
And then we would be limited as to what we could do to them, correct?
Yeah, there would have to be other, you know, substantial measures in order to do away with that, correct?
So, Mr. Mayor, this needs to be on the agenda next week.
It sure does, December 6th.
So how do we, something we discussed now, what we want, or...
I'd imagine...
I'm just looking for, yeah, direction on, you know, if you want, if you want to prohibit, if you want to limit, or if you want to just, you know, let it ride. I felt obligated to, you know, make sure the council was made aware of what their options were under the statute.
But whatever we do has to be in writing, right? Either a resolution or legislation or something.
I would propose an ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
House Number Four.
I would be all for just saying for the first, you know, to, you said something about a lot of jurisdictions are going a year first, you know, prohibiting, and so they can kind of feel out the area, right? I mean, that's what a lot of people, you said, are doing.
People are talking about, that's one of the options that people are talking about, doing, you know, a year, you know?
I would be okay with looking at that, so that we can thoroughly discuss it. I'm up for that. And I don't think, I just think that'd be a safer bet, so we have better discussion time for this.
What I would actually propose is just the council do a blanket prohibition. If you're inclined to do that, and then if you decide you want in a year, you want to roll it back, you can, but it doesn't, it won't require action, you know, for you to take.
And I have to be real honest, you know, we've worked so hard on this town, I really don't want to see one of these in, you know, downtown Hamilton. We've worked very hard to make Hamilton what it is, and it keeps, you know, we just, I don't know, I just, I think it would poison what we did to be...
We'd control the situation better if we prohibit and then see how it goes than if we do a restriction or take no action. Is that a fair statement to say? I think that's what we want to do.
That's what I would like to do.
Mr. Mayor.
House Number One.
Letitia, so in other states where this has happened and it's rolled out, is it reasonable to think there will be really good guidelines within six months or a year? I know a lot of states, it just, it doesn't happen overnight. They're not going to pop up next week or January 1. So is there a reasonable amount of time? I know you suggested a year. And I guess since it's learning for all of us, we don't know what the state's going to do, how it's going to roll out, I just want to be reasonable.
So this, and there's so much to this statute, and I was trying not to put everything in this presentation, but then, you know, put enough for you to be able to make a decision. But Section 3780.28, it says that if the Division of Cannabis Control fails to adopt rules necessary to initially implement this chapter within nine months of the effective date of this chapter, or fails to begin accepting license applications within six months of the effective date of this chapter, as provided, any citizen of the State of Ohio may commence an action in the Court of Common Pleas of Franklin County, Ohio, to compel the Division of Cannabis Control to perform the actions mandated under this chapter. So based upon that language, it is clear to me that we're going to be seeing action within six to nine months, or there could be legal action. So I haven't done a poll to see like how other states have rolled it out and the timing, but I know based upon what's in our law, that if we don't see action within six to nine months, there could be court action.
Yeah. Okay. And that makes sense. I mean, that's reasonable to take the time to consider it. I know that the voters have spoken, and it was voted in, and I think we owe ourselves, the city, the time to figure it out, how is this going to work before you just jump right in and say, whatever? And I don't believe that would be the right move either. So thank you very much for this presentation.
Okay. So is that, is it understood, I'll go back and prepare an ordinance to prohibit?
Yes.
Okay. For 12 months?
Or do we just...
I don't know that we need to put a time period.
We don't really need to put a timeframe on it, but if, can people still, okay, say somebody wants to, you know, open a dispensary or something here, they can still go through the planning department and, or whatever, you know, to see if they can get one open.
Not if we, not if we put this ordinance in place. They will not be able to do that.
I didn't know if there was any way they could go in and take a look at it, or, you know, come to council, talk to us about it, but it's, okay, once we put it in, it's in.
Not the way I'm going to draft it. It will be prohibited.
And we do not restrict use. We have no control over that.
No control over that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, what they voted in is fair.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
No timeline, right?
No timeline.
Perfect, I'm with it.
Okay, that takes care of special presentations. We now go to audience of citizens. individuals who wish to make comments may speak during this part of the agenda, or may reserve the right to speak when something is just prior to being voted on by council. individuals who wish to speak are required to sign this book at the table. Each speaker is allowed five minutes, up to five minutes. We have one person who signed the book, and that is Scott Meister.
So, thanks, council, for listening to me. I got to strip the road. But I got a fence I put up. My uncle sold his buildings, and he gave me some money for helping him sell some of his equipment, so I put me a bigger fence up to keep the heroin addicts off my property. They're running naked. I called police. I mean, they can only do whatever they can do. You know, it's just, the drugs is bad. And the boys' girls' clubs, they got a fence up, they got a frozen fence up all the way around. I mean, they're allowing me to keep the old fence up, which is nine feet tall, over by my house. I got a half acre, and I was wanting to fence it all off. They gave them off because they bopped tents up. You know, I got homeless people, I mean, I do it for the hard for them, and they ain't got a place to go, but I can't sleep on the property and poop in the buckets and stuff like that, you know, I gotta have something. You know, they never want me to take my fence down, they're gonna find me a bunch of money, you know, and all I'm doing is trying to fix up the property.
You've been cited, is that correct? Have you been cited?
Not yet, but AJ wants to come in my backyard and assess where my doors are at. I was like, well, my doors are facing towards Bender. So I had my address changed to Bender Avenue. And I still got parked my address, because I got, you know, it goes all the way around. It's a corner lot.
Well, it sounds like you're going through, it sounds like you're going through a process now, is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I got rid of one of my cabins, one of my Amish-built cabins. I paid $6,004, got rid of that one. Now they want me to get rid of another one.
Well, why don't you just keep going through the process, appeal if you want to appeal, and then just keep working the process? That's what I can tell you to do right now, because it's kind of...
Well, my uncle told me to cut it down to six feet. I got it eight feet. I paid $5 apiece for it, and it cost me over $30,000 for the fence.
I think you have to work through the process and appeal or do whatever you need to do, seek legal advice if you want to do that.
Yeah.
But I know, you and I have talked about other matters. I know you care about your neighborhood. I know that, okay? But there's a process.
Arnold Fisher, she helped me out with that drug house. There were 17 on the 111 house.
Well...
She did a good job.
Let's just see how this particular process works out, if you want to seek legal attention or legal advice.
I mean, the boys' and girls' clubs, they put a fence up because they're heroin needles. You know, these people don't want, they don't have no respect. They just throw the needles wherever they want to.
Thank you. You've made a, you've made a point for us to hear, but I think you need to speak and be heard at the various levels as you go through the process. That's all I can tell you right now, I think, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I thought I'd come in and speak.
Well, now, you, you, thank you for coming in and expressing some of your concerns.
All right, I appreciate it.
That takes care of audience of citizens. Okay, we now go to the consent agenda, and that includes all staff reports, caucus reports, meaning minutes. And we usually have a committee of the whole, and that's when council can ask questions, provide direction, or comment on various reports. Now, except the motion, it's regularly recessed, the committee of the whole will take place.
So moved.
Second. Motion to make by Councilmember Nav, second of my advice, Mayor Ryan. All the favorably say aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:50. Okay, Mr. City Clerk.
So we'll have four presentations this evening. The first item will be presented by our Planning Director, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. Tonight I have a caucus for resolution for a maintenance agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation. The city planning department's been working with Envision Partnerships on a plan to clean up the area underneath the High Main Bridge and beautify it on the west side, where there's a multi-use trail. And Rachel Harding from Envision Partnerships has been working really hard at getting a mural painted underneath there. And this is the proposed design of the mural, and ODOT has accepted it, but they require a agreement with the municipality, a maintenance agreement with the municipality that the mural will be in. And so that is what you have on your agenda tonight. And then what would happen is that we would have a sub-agreement with Envision Partnerships to actually do the maintenance. Do you have any questions about this?
Questions? Thank you.
Then up next for Agenda Items two through four will be a presentation by our Finance Director, Mr. Dave Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens of Hamilton. So I've got three, three reports here. There are annual items that we go through every year, year-end items, housekeeping items, and please excuse my voice, I've been battling bronchitis also. So the first one is a resolution requesting, the Ohio Revised Code requires that we do it by resolution, and we get property tax advances from the county auditor. Kind of to put that in perspective for you, property taxes are due from the homeowners, say in mid-February. The county auditor would advance them in March and then give us a settle-up in... The county auditor would advance them in March, and then give us a settle-up in April. Same thing happens in August, you know, the property taxes are due, the county auditor gives us an advance in September and a settle-up in October. So in effect, you're getting both of those, you know, halves of a property or the real estate tax payment about four weeks in advance. You can see in the bottom bullet point that currently we get a very good interest rate at Star Ohio. It's about five, a little over five and a half percent. That was as of the close of business on Monday. You know, I did a very rudimentary interest calculation. Of course, that's, you know, compounded daily, the rate's changing daily, but if you just do a very rudimentary, it's probably bringing in about $15,000 a year. We do this every year. Luckily now, we're on the earnings side of the things. We're seeing very good interest rates, so it's, you know, it's a very prudent thing to do with taxpayer money. Any questions on that?
Questions? Thank you, Dave.
So next, again, we go through this pretty much every year. We amend Schedule A, that is the non-union employees, and we're suggesting an across-the-board 3% increase for all non-union employees, and a 2%, 2.6% one-time lump sum bonus for Schedule A employees in step 11 of the current range. So the 3% salary increase would take effect December 16th, and that will only take effect if the 2024 appropriations ordinance is approved with that in it, and that would be approved on December 13th. So it is included in the 2024 appropriations ordinance. We use December 16th because that is a pay period date. We budget on a cash basis, so that would be the first paycheck in January, so your cash going out would match how it is budgeted. Council adopted similar legislation, December 14th, 2022, for the same 3% across-the-board increase. Not necessarily new, but new to adding it to this ordinance is the one-time lump sum bonus. So in 2023, we passed that in August. So a Schedule A employee comes in, he'll normally start in a range, and it's step one. We have performance evaluations due at the end of June of every year, and if you get a satisfactory or above performance evaluation, then you get a step increase. A step increase is usually equal to about 2.6%. Once you top out at step 11, you no longer get those step increases, or we call them merit increases. So last year in August, council passed an emergency ordinance that allowed this one-time payment. Moving on to the next slide, it's, you know, I got the table up there of the costs. We're combining them this year, though, so instead of doing it, you know, the 3% now, and then the one-time lump sum in August, we're combining them in one ordinance just for efficiencies. It'll save the payroll department a lot of time, you know, calculating retro pay and all that. Again, this only goes into effect if the appropriations ordinance or budget is passed on December 13th, and you can see the cost by the fund categories, the major funds up there. Is there any questions on that one?
This time? Thank you.
Okay. So the last one is the 2024 proposed budget, and I don't see Christine Carr here, but I did want to give a shout out to her because I think this year you're going to see a much more holistic budget. We worked together. We're actually probably a couple of weeks ahead of schedule in being able to get information out to you guys and administration. But the proposed budget or the appropriations ordinance will be presented to council, and a public hearing will be held on December 6th. A detailed all-funds presentation will be given at the public hearing on December 6th. We'll have a first reading on the 6th, of course. The second reading will be on the 13th, and the vote. The first finance committee was last Friday on the 10th. We did the infrastructure funds this Friday on the 17th. We're going to go over the general fund. You can see at the bottom bullet point, we've got the, we've got the all-funds budget is wrapped up. It's just over $383 million. It's up 6.5% or just over $23 million. It's kind of small, but I listed out the increases by category, so, and to give you a little flavor of what the categories is, a capital projects fund, you know, you've got the building of the Criminal Justice Center, or the building of the new Fire Station 26, the infrastructure renewal fund, the enterprise funds are your four utilities, including all their capital funds, special revenue funds, street maintenance, stormwater, street levy, and all the levy funds are in there. Any questions on that one? We hope to have, we usually give out a budget and brief. We hope to have that out by the end of the week. If not, it'll be early next week. We'll get all that to you guys. We'll get all the slides to you guys from the finance committee meetings, work with Chairman Nab, or Mr. Nab, he's the chairman of the finance committee meeting, however, you know, he wants to handle that. So thank you very much. Hope you have no questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Okay. I said, a motion to the committee of the whole be closed?
So moved.
Second. Motion to make by council member Nab, second by vice mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:59. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting be reconvened?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to make by council member Vaughn, seconded by council member Fear. Rule call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
And that's also at 6:59. Council accept the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion. With the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports for the consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second. Motion to make by councilmember Pullman, seconded by vice mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7 o'clock. Now go into the public hearing. Now accept the motion at the regular meeting be recessed, and a following public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to make by councilmember Pullman, seconded by councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7 o'clock. Now go into the public hearing. If you would please read that, Mr. City Clerk.
A public hearing regarding executing the Third Amendment to the Hamilton-Indian Springs Joint Economic Development District contract with Fairfield Township of Butler County by adding area to the district territory and redistributing income tax collections from the added area.
Now, the audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing involving an amendment to the Indian Springs-Hamilton jet. Now, the audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing involving amending the Hamilton-Indian Springs Joint Economic Development District. Nobody signed the book? Anyone on council wishes to be heard or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
At this time. Councilmember Nab?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. Motion to make by councilmember Nab, seconded by councilmember Lauer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:01. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting be reconvened?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to make by vice mayor Ryan, seconded by councilmember Fear. Rule call vote on that motion, please. Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Now go to council, ask the legislative items, and now accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of the legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second. Motion to make by councilmember Pullman, seconded by vice mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:02. Now go into pending legislation, agenda item number six, secondary ordinance involving a right-of-way dedication plan.
An ordinance approving the right-of-way dedication plan for Part Lot 28954, 801 South 8th Street, located at Walnut Street and Hannover Street, 4th Ward, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to make by councilmember Vaughn, seconded by councilmember Fear. Any discussion about this one? Hearing none, rule call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
We now go to agenda item number seven, secondary ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A, reassigning a pay range for a particular classification.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2022-12-126, adopted December 14th, 2022, as amended from time to time by reassigning the pay range for the assistant to the city manager classification, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by vice mayor Ryan. Any comments, questions about this one? Hearing none, rule call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Now go to agenda item number eight, under new legislation now, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving the amendment to the Hamilton-Indian Springs Joint Economic Development District contract.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the Third Amendment to the Hamilton-Indian Springs Joint Economic Development District contract with Fairfield Township of Butler County by adding area, by adding area to the district territory and redistributing income tax collections from the added area, and declaring emergency, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number nine, first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of Crawford Avenue.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Crawford Avenue located between South Erie Boulevard and Mosler Avenue adjacent to 850 South Erie Boulevard situated in the 5th Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio. Save Hamilton petitioner, first reading.
Thank you. Go to agenda item number 10, resolution involving appointed legal counsel representing indigent defendants.
A resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Hamilton, Ohio, the Butler County Public Defender Commission, and the Butler County Board of Commissioners relative to reimbursement of appointed legal counsel to represent indigent defendants in the Hamilton Municipal Court for the calendar year 2024.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion to make by councilmember Pullman, seconded by vice mayor Ryan. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, rule call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We now go to number 11, which is a resolution involving a side lot.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 1117 Garden Avenue.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
I'll make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to make by councilmember Pullman, seconded by councilmember Vaughn. Any questions or discussion about this one? Hearing none, rule call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Now go to agenda item number 12, resolution involving a road salt agreement between the city and Hamilton City School District.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement for the sale of road salt to the Hamilton City School District for the year 2023 through 2024 winter season.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by vice mayor Ryan. Questions about this one? Hearing none, rule call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Now go to agenda item number 13, resolution involving the five-year update of our hazard mitigation plan.
A resolution approving and adopting the Butler County, Ohio 2023 Hazard Mitigation Plan Five-Year Update.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to make by councilmember Vaughn, seconded by councilmember Lauer. Questions or comments on this one? Rule call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Agenda item number 14, resolution appointing Susan Vaughn, board of directors of OKI, and Timothy Nab as alternate for the term commencing January 1st, 2024, and terminating December 31st, 2024. Fear, motion?
Yes.
Resolution be adopted.
I'll second it again.
Motion to make by councilmember Lauer, seconded by councilmember Fear. Questions or comments about this particular resolution?
Mayor, do you mind if I read this into the record first?
Would you please read it?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, gosh, man, I can't believe I went through all that.
A resolution appointing Susan Vaughn to serve on the board of directors of the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana OKI Regional Council of Governments, and Timothy Nab as alternate for the term commencing January 1st, 2024, and terminating December 31st, 2024.
Fear, motion?
Yes.
Resolution be adopted.
I'll second it again.
Motion to make by councilmember Lauer, seconded by councilmember Fear. Any discussion? Okay. Rule call, though, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?[1545.15]
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Okay, we now go to agenda item number 15, resolution involving a improvement district program for Bell Avenue at Dixie Highway.
A resolution supporting the filing of a grant application by the Butler County Transportation Improvement District to the Ohio Department of Transportation's Office of Jobs and Commerce Transportation Improvement District Program for the Bell Avenue at Dixie Highway project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
I'll make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any questions or comments about this one? Okay, hearing done, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Audience of City Council?
City Manager.
The audience of City Manager, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick comments. Mr. T. Garden, I just want to congratulate you and your students. I know it has to be difficult to come in front of a council meeting that's actually being televised and perform in a very closed quarters like this, but absolutely outstanding performance. Thank you for being here. It reminded me of my time in swing choir. I earned the nickname Joshie One Note. I don't think that was a, a positive thing. And, and Mr. Pittman from the Journal News can attest to my dancing skills, which are incredibly minimal. I think he has a video somewhere that, that was pirated, but, but thank you for being here tonight. Second of all, I want to say congratulations to Third Eye Brewing for their open house they had last night. I think they formally open to the public on Friday for lunch, this Friday for lunch. But what a tremendous investment on Route 4. But I think it'd be remiss of me for not to also thank Municipal Brew Works for being the microbrewery pioneer in Hamilton. They had a vision a decade ago of, of doing something in our downtown when very few thought our downtown was a good place to locate. And Jim Goodwin and Mark Jackson and Sean, that whole group, just, I know there's five of them, but the three local ones in particular, I really appreciate what they've done and the transformation of our downtown. Dave already talked about the budget committee meeting on Friday. Finally, I just want to say that the mayor and I had the privilege to speak at Berkeley Monday of this week. We do that on an annual basis. It's just a good opportunity to get in front of a lot of our citizens that helped build this community, them and their spouses, were instrumental in so many of the companies that made Hamilton what it is. It's just always, it's a nice reminder to get in front of them once a year and have a, a good conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
First of all, thank you. Is it Joshie One Note?
That's what they called me.
Thank you, Joshie.
Till they kicked me off the team.
Councilmember Fear.
I just want to add something that you said about Municipal Brew, because I was thinking the same thing. But one of the things that stands out to me the most is that Jim and Mark are everywhere. They, there's no sense of competition. They embrace every new business that comes. They come and they give them support, the most advice they can. I just think that they just are great guys.
Yep. They were there last night.
They were. They're always there.
Who gives so much to the community and that craft brewer community. They kind of stick together. I know Anne Marie was there from Casual Pint last night. Just people who, who believe in partnerships, and it's, it's a great thing to see.
It is.
Anyone else on council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I'll tailgate along on, on what Jim and Anne Marie are doing. Many of you have probably seen there will be an inaugural Hamilton Turkey Drop. It's a takeoff on WKRP's Turkey Drop of 45 years ago, which is a hilarious video snippet. You can find it on YouTube and Facebook and all over the place. The duck drop is, will be the Turkey Drop, will be a benefit for the Veterans Wall at Veterans Park, which is just, again, a collaboration between Municipal Brew Works, as we just discussed, and what Jim Goodman does and what Anne Marie at Casual Pint is doing to be able to have this fun event in the parking lot just outside of Casual Pint Municipal Brew Works. That'll be held on, on November the 22nd at 6 o'clock. They hope to be able to drop the, the ducks on targets. And the duck, the winning duck that's on the target would then be in receipt of approximately $600. The other 600 would be conducted similar to a split. The pot would go to the Veterans Wall. It's being refurbished and renewed up at Veterans Park on top of New London Road and, and B Street. So it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to be able to give back. I've also had a number of calls today on where are our banners that were hung on Main Street? And as we promised, those banners were going to come down right after, or right after Veterans Day to be cleaned and stored during the winter in order for the Christmas decorations to go up, which were put into place earlier this week. The banners on B Street will also be taken down and cleaned and then put away, and then those will be reinstalled next April and May along with the new banners. We're already up over 80 new banners. So if anyone's watching on TV Hamilton, the Chamber of Commerce website, the City of Hamilton website, the Hamilton Community Foundation website have all posted our two-page banner application. So please submit those if you have any questions. My cell phone is also on the application. You're welcome to call me, and I'll try to answer any questions anyone may have. Thanks very much.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Fear.
I just want to remind everybody, Saturday night is the tree lighting at Markham Park. Every year they add a new event, so it is going to be a very enjoyable evening. Love to see everybody there singing along with us.
5 o'clock?
5 o'clock. Tree, Santa comes at 6. But we have entertainment by elementary choirs that are going to be singing at River's Edge. And then Santa comes at 6 o'clock and lights the tree.
Councilmember Ryan?
Good luck to Coach Lauer and the Baitin' Rams on Friday.
Yes.
Definitely.
Thank you, thank you. It was really interesting on Friday.
It's like a Disney movie.
It was probably one of the most exciting two minutes of football I've ever seen.
I believe it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
On another note, I really want to congratulate Arvy Crouch. Today, he was nominated Southwest Division One Coach of the Year for our Football Coaches Association. He has come in in two years and really changed the culture. And I think what he has done for our football players in the City of Hamilton has been something that I haven't seen since Ed Minry had really taken off with his. I'm proud of him. I want to congratulate him and I wish him the best.
Did a great job and he's a great guy, too, and he's been in those men, definitely. Anyone else? I spoke to some Cub Scouts at Grace United Methodist Church about citizenship, and that's kind of fun. And I sometimes ask them, what would you do if you were mayor for a day? And it's called Mayor for a Day. And it's kind of fun. One scout said, be kind. And I'm going, you know what? That's great. We should all be kind. Although if you were around me yesterday and today, Monday maybe, I was not kind to some people. So if you were, if I wasn't kind to you, I do apologize to people that I was not kind to. So, hey, be kind, right? I got to work on that. All right, I, I promise you I'll work on, folks, okay? All right. Anyone else on council? If not, request to go into executive session?
Yes, Mayor, for three items. The first is to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy of an applicant for economic development assistance. The second is to consider the appointment, employment, promotion of a public employee or official. And the third is to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Regarding your first request, your motion to executive session is found to be necessary to protect the interest of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with an economic development project.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
That's at 7:18. Your motion to go into executive session for the stated purposes given by the city manager.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay, that is also adopted at 7:18. We're going to go into executive session. We'll come out of executive session just to basically adjourn the meeting. There'll be no further public comments except to close that meeting. So we're going to go into executive session right now. Thank you.